Architect from Massachusetts. Mr. Barnard also has two houses, I believe, that are on the National Register back in Massachusetts. And so he was the architect of the residence. One of the reasons why this is before you this evening is because it's a fine early example of Spanish colonial revival style and also the integrity of the residence is fantastic. And so that's why this is being brought forward. The photos on the left, you can see the residence as it appeared shortly after construction in the 1930s. And then the image below is one from last year that was taken. So you can see that the residence still retains its character, although the landscaping has changed somewhat. The palm trees are believed to be original from when the house was constructed. In terms of the review of the application, the Historic Site Preservation Board found that it met criteria number two, number three, and number four. Number two being associated with Henry Pearson, his expertise in the field of rubber production and his contributions to the industry. Criteria number three in terms of being a good example locally of Spanish colonial revival architecture and then also possessing high artistic value. Relative to integrity, as I had mentioned, there have been relatively minor modifications to the residence, but as you can see from the photographs, still retains its integrity. So based on those findings, the Historic Site Preservation Board has recommended Class One designation of the Henry Pearson residence and staff would also recommend designation as well. It's my understanding the property owner is available via phone. She does not have a presentation for you, but would be happy to answer any questions you might have about the residence. That concludes my presentation and I would also be happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
And Madam Mayor, I'll also note at this point, we have no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff before we open the public hearing? Seeing none, I would like to open the public hearing. The applicant will have up to five minutes to present their case. If requested, the applicant will have two additional minutes at the end for rebuttal. The public is always invited to speak on this public hearing item for up to two minutes. So City Clerk, just to confirm, we have no additional speakers.
Correct. No additional speakers and the applicant appreciates your consideration of this item.
Thank you. So there being no speakers, the public hearing is now closed. Is there any discussion, additional questions for counsel or a motion? Mayor Proton Middleton.
I think Councilmember Garner got her hand up first.
Councilmember Garner.
Okay, that's fine. I just have one comment. You know, these generally go pretty fast, but we do get these really big reports about the property and about the history and it's all really interesting. And just one little gem that I noticed in this one is that Mr. Pearson dug the deepest well in the Coachella Valley and that's why he named the ranch Deep Well, which I just thought was quite cute and wanted to let people know about that. Very sweet little name. More, I have no appreciation for our neighborhood being called Deep Well. So, thank you.
Thank you for raising that. That was my favorite fun fact from the report as well and it seems obvious, but I had no idea. So Mayor Proton Middleton.
All right. Thank you. For those of us who live Deep Well adjacent, we had heard about the Deep Well previously, but in any case, I'll make the motion to approve, but in doing so, I also want to acknowledge the incredible work that was done by the previous owner, Mr. Kevin Comer, in restoring this property to its previous beautiful state. And I also want to thank the current owner, Ms. Mel, who in addition to maintaining an absolutely stunning home, has been a very much a contributor to our community and has opened her home up on multiple occasions for nonprofit organizations to raise money for their good causes in this home. It's another example of why we are so proud of our city.
Thank you. So there's a motion made by Mayor Proton Middleton to adopt the resolution and approve as in the staff report. Is there a second to that motion?
Oh, seconded.
Seconded by Councilmember Garner. City Clerk, can we have a vote, please?
Mayor Proton Middleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Garner.
Aye.
Councilmember Coors.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Mayor Holstich.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. Now we will go back to item 1B as in boy. If we can have a staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I must admit, our IT staff are the most professional and in this case, it helps if I had emailed this to them before the meeting. So that's my fault there. So quickly, this is item 1B regarding the modification of the gates, as you've heard in public comment. For the benefit of the general public that may not be familiar with what we're talking about, this is involving four streets between Chuckwalla and between Villa Merleste and Avenida Caballeros. Thirty years ago, at the request of 40 residents in that area, the city formed an assessment district to install some fencing and gates shown there in the red circles. So this is just one example. This is on Fiesta Road looking north, showing the fence and the wall that was installed. And this is the view looking from the other direction. What is under consideration tonight is limited to opening one section of fence to provide for pedestrian and bicycle access while maintaining the restriction of vehicular access through those gates. And so simply put, that fence there, that section of wrought iron fencing would be removed so that that sidewalk that ends at that gate could continue through and be opened for pedestrians and bicycle access. And so that's the nature of what's before you tonight for your consideration, Madam Mayor.
Thank you for the staff report. Are there questions or comments from council? Councilmember Coors.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Holstich. I pulled this item so we could have a separate discussion and I want to share some things on this. So first, I want to make it clear that what we are discussing, it's allowing pedestrians to walk on a public street without a barrier that was placed in the middle of the blocks. I've discussed this and this has been discussed at council several times over the past year. As I shared with council a year ago, I first learned of the gates when I was campaigning in 2019, which is 18 months ago. During that time, several residents living north of the gates raised the issue with me and shared how the gates negatively impacted them. I was truly taken aback to find out the gates have been placed across the middle of a public road as a barrier to separate apartments on one side and single-family homes on the other. I had never seen or heard of this or anything similar in our city. It's important to note that when these gates were first installed 30 years ago, those residents who rented north of the gates were not notified as to what was being proposed. That's because state law then and still only requires notification of property owners. Fortunately, Palm Springs changed that and now renters are notified equally with property owners. It should also be noted, as a speaker who's on the Neighborhood Association Board shared earlier, that the Neighborhood Association has not included anyone who lived north of the gates and in fact, only allowed property owners to serve on the board or vote on issues impacting their own neighborhood. Renters could not vote. Those issues added to the feeling of being excluded that some people living north of the gates shared with me. I am very pleased that the new leadership and members of the neighborhood organization are changing both of these moving forward and I want to thank them for doing so. Back in 2019, I heard from many residents. I won't share all of it, but I do want to share something that one gentleman said to me because it really impacted me. He told me that he felt that he lived in a segregated neighborhood and did not understand how a city that claims to pride itself on diversity allows gates separating a neighborhood based on who lives on each side. A longtime realtor in the city told me when I first raised this issue that him and others called this the Palm Springs Wall, referring to the wall then President Trump was advocating for the border with Mexico. What became clear to me is that regardless of the reasons the gate were installed 30 years ago, there are residents who feel excluded by the city allowing these gates to have been installed and to remain for 30 years. In June of last year, I shared that I thought the gates should be removed at council and started hearing from residents on the south side of the gates who were notified of my comments by the Neighborhood Association. The majority of those who contacted me were primarily concerned about vehicle access. They were particularly concerned about people driving through the neighborhood to and from what was then the proposed arena on Arenas that is no longer happening, as well as in taking and picking up children from school. Some also shared that the gates allowed children to play on the north side without cars driving on the street. In response to this, I immediately said that I was fine keeping the roads closed for vehicles if that's what people on both sides of the gates wanted while allowing pedestrians to use public roads and sidewalks. I shared that in June of last year with a board member of the neighborhood organization who spoke this evening. I also shared that there may be a better way to prevent vehicles that would also add benefit to the neighborhood, such as adding more parking for residents or park-a-pox, as someone had mentioned, and playground on the north side in front of the existing gates. In July of last year, Councilmember Garner and I requested staff at a public council meeting to research and bring to council an item to allow pedestrian access while maintaining no vehicular access. Over the past year, many residents south of the gates have shared their reasons they believe the gates were installed 30 years ago. Some shared that there were crime and gangs, as we've heard tonight, hanging in the area near the apartments back then, and the gates were to help reduce crime on the south side of the gates. Others mentioned car races and noisy school buses as a key reason. It was also acknowledged by many that the issue that existed 30 years ago that led them to want gates installed no longer existed and many spoke positively about the apartments and those living north of the gates today. Sadly, that is not everyone's view. I received several emails saying that allowing pedestrians to use the sidewalks on the street will lead to crime and decrease property values by 20%. I've received numerous, numerous emails, but I want to share just one part of one of those emails from someone involved with advocating for the gates 30 years ago and also would like the barrier to remain. And this is what she wrote. Apartments full of poor people on Chuckwalla, Cottonwood, and Vista Chino paying rent and living next to people of a better life is what creates the problem because the children don't understand the system and their parents don't teach them moral values. Encouraging a father figure in the household might help, but that is another story. Unfortunately, that is still the view of some residents in our city and something we all need to be committed to changing. I also want to share the police chief Reyes reviewed current crime statistics and found that the area both north and south of the gates had very low crime rates compared to the city overall. So even if crime was a major factor in why people wanted to block the streets 30 years ago, as many have testified and spoken to us tonight, that issue does not exist today. After doing the research, staff advised us that creating an opening for pedestrians did not require notice or cancel action and could be done administratively. We requested that this matter be brought to council and agendized and that all residents, homeowners and renters alike, be mailed notifications so they could weigh in. We heard from many of them tonight and many more by email. While everyone on the north side I have heard from, including the speaker tonight and by email, supports allowing pedestrian access and ending the separation in the neighborhood, there is a split among those on the south. It is my view that separating residents and a neighborhood by installing a physical barrier across publicly owned city streets, regardless of the reason, is wrong. Building a wall separating a community is not something I support. I do not believe that represents the values of our city and I have told people in a different neighborhood who have recently asked about installing gates to stop traffic and limit access that I would oppose such an effort anywhere. That said, I also fully understand the people who live south of the barrier, as well as many on the north side, are now used to not having cars driving on the streets and prefer not having vehicle traffic. Many people shared that they moved into the area and into those particular streets because there were no cars or vehicles. So based on all the input I've received for well over a year from residents, I support allowing pedestrians and those on bicycles to be able to use these public streets without a barrier while also supporting maintaining the prohibition on vehicles. And I hope council takes action on this tonight. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Coors. Thank you for those comments and for reading that one public comment in particular. I think that's really powerful and important. We receive a lot of comments and that one in particular shows some of the thinking behind these gates, at least by some. So I have a question, if I can, of staff and the city attorney. We received public comment from an attorney who called in about notice and process. If we could just detail for the public and everyone here, what was the notice that we provided for this item? What are we legally required to do? What did we do? What's the legal process we're required to do on this item and in comparison to what we've done? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Holstich. I'll defer to staff on the process that you actually filed, followed for providing notice, but I understand there were notices mailed and some hand delivered, but staff is in a better position to address that than I am. As for this action, there is no legal requirement for anything beyond placing it on the agenda pursuant to the Brown Act, which requires your agendas to be posted 72 hours ahead of time before your meeting and that was complied with. But there's no requirement like there would be in some of your land use decisions or some of the other actions you take where you have to mail to 300 feet or 500 feet or 1,000 feet, depending on the action and what's happening, that those requirements don't exist for this action this evening.
Thank you. And then if city staff could detail the notice that we did provide.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. We did notice an area that included essentially between Avenida Caballeros and Villa Merleste from Paseo El Norador north to Vista Chino and over a little bit west of Villa Merleste. We do know that in merging and creating the address labels, there was an error in placing names with addresses. We went to the extra step when we received returned notices to then go back and print the notices and hand deliver those to the ones that we received had come back. So we did everything we could in getting the notices and the information out to the area in question that is really focused north and south of those four streets.
Thank you so much for your work on that. I know we pride ourselves on going above and beyond state law in terms of noticing and really appreciate you and city staff going door to door to hand deliver that when it was misspent by the mail service. Other comments or questions by councilmembers? Councilmember Woods. Councilmember Woods, you're muted.
It's a habit of mine. Is Chief Reyes able to come on? Is he in the audience there?
Yes, he's coming to the microphone.
Oh, great. I just wanted to follow up on something that was mentioned by Councilmember Coors and maybe Chief Reyes can talk to us a little about the crime that currently is existing there and maybe what it might have been at the time the gates were put in in 1989, 1990.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of council. Yes, back in the early 90s, crime was prevalent in that area. It was quite bad, a lot of drug crimes and crimes of violence. However, as the area improved with development over the years, it's changed dramatically. In fact, I just researched statistics for north of the gates on Chuckwalla, Cottonwood, up to Vista Chino between Merleste and Caballeros. And over the past six months, eliminating your traffic stops and your medical aid calls, there was a total of 96 calls for service resulting in seven documented police reports. In that same timeframe, just south of the gates, there was 56 calls for service resulting in two reports being generated. So again, for an entire six-month period, the end result was seven reports north of the gates and two reports south of the gates. And you know, when it comes to whatever decision you make, whether you open pedestrian gates and predicting crime, increasing the beauty of what we have established over the years with close to 50 organized neighborhoods is what's going to make the true difference in regards to partnering with the community. You have your liaison officers to communicate with and do what we can to work together to prevent crime before it occurs.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Other councilmember comments? Mayor Proton Middleton.
I have a question before I get to comments and this is for Ms. Hall. One of the speakers that spoke this evening referenced discriminatory CCNRs restricting individuals and the implication was by ethnicity. I know there are still old CCNRs that are out there in many places, but could you remind us what the governing law is in California and for approximately how long it has been the case that such CCNRs are completely invalid?
I'd be happy to. Sure, you will find across the country, but in California, true, there are many, many communities that have those types of CCNRs dating back to just actually after World War I and then most prevalent after World War II. It was a common technique to keep neighborhoods segregated to include that language. Also back during that same timeframe, you would find that the VA, for example, would give loans, but they wouldn't give loans to people of color, particularly African-Americans, as another way of segregating. So there was a number of governmental programs that were endorsed or along those lines that legislation following the Civil Rights Act and then some additional legislation in the late 60s and 70s. Those types of programs and those restrictions in CCNRs are invalid.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was a great summary off the top of your head there. Councilmember Garner, did I see that you were going to comment next?
Sure, I can do that. I might have misheard, but I thought that there was some confusion about who the first neighborhood organization was in one of the comments and so just wanted to clear that up. It's Desert Highlands Gateway Estates. They were the first in the 1960s. So I just wanted to make sure that was clear for anyone who might have also heard that and been a little bit confused because I think it's really important to acknowledge that the first neighborhood in our city was our African-American neighborhood. The second thing I want to say is that we had a lot of comments written and some in the voice about gated communities. And I want to go on the record as saying I do not support having gated communities in Palm Springs. I do not support having gated communities anywhere. I currently live in a gated community because I'm a renter and I'm limited in my ability to, of where I get to live when you rent. And I don't like it. I wish that there was no gate around me. It's also very interesting when you look at gated communities and neighborhoods that are not gated. And what has occurred too in our city is we've had gated communities that surround certain neighborhoods, but not others. And that's also very telling. So yes, I do believe that gated communities are a symbol of racism and that is something I am not afraid or, you know, to say. So I do want to put that out there for those that want to know if I wish all of the walls would come down. Yes, yes, I do. The other thing that I do want to state about this is that I have talked to some people on the northern part of this area who have said that, yeah, now that there's a cul-de-sac here, it is great. Our kids play, we have additional parking and that's fantastic. It's an unintended benefit to what we have right now. So that should be able to maintain. But I do want to point out that there could have been a cul-de-sac without a gate. There is a cul-de-sac right now and even if the entire gate were removed, the cul-de-sac would remain. So I just want to point that out as it's a little bit of a discrepancy in the comments that we're hearing because it would still be there regardless. However, what we're proposing today is opening one side of the gates to allow for pedestrian access. That's it. The children will still be able to play, there still will not be vehicular access. So it doesn't change that much. It's a pretty minor change. So I do support this and I think that it's worth taking the time to make our community more accessible to everyone.
Thank you. Mayor Proton Middleton. I'm sorry, I didn't know if you were, I thought you were finished there, but if you have other comments?
No, I wanted to get the questions finished and now I'm ready to offer a couple of comments. And I know this has been a really tough issue for a large number of people. First, just to build up a couple of things, Palm Springs has been opposed to gated communities for quite a long time. And if you look at actions of the Planning Commission and actions of, in particular, the city council and the most previous city council, the number of times when gates have been approved are really, really minuscule and incredibly unique. The reports that I have read, gated communities provide more frequently a perception of safety and security than the actual fact of safety and additional security. I have also, on any number of occasions, usually when I was sitting on the Planning Commission, heard from any number of developers who have responded to that comment that it's more perception than reality, shaking their head, yes, we understand it's more perception than reality, but that's what our customers want and that's what we want to deliver to them. We take an awful lot of pride in Palm Springs that we're trying to bring gates down. And I think the comments from the police chief are very telling, that 30 years or more ago, there were crime issues, but those have resolved themselves largely in this neighborhood. In fact, as I understand it, it's one of the safer neighborhoods on both sides of these I want to thank the neighborhood, El Mirador, for beginning the process to reach out to incorporate its full community. I know that within 1PS, that's been some difficult issues at times, but those neighborhoods that have been inclusive, and that is the majority of the neighborhoods, have found that that is the right way to go. And I applaud 1PS for changing the rules to make it much easier for neighborhoods to grow boundaries. I know that from personal experience. When my wife and I moved into Palm Springs, we were in a little hole between the Chalkwoods River neighborhood and the Deep Well neighborhood. We weren't sure if either would have us or would take us. Ultimately, after gathering signatures from three-quarters of the people who lived in that little hole, because we didn't have 20 total people living, we were able to get the city manager to be able to accept that enough people were interested in joining the neighborhood so as to be able to join. We've made it a whole lot simpler than it used to be, but for anyone who wants to argue, it didn't that it was hard to grow boundaries. I can tell you from personal experience, it was very hard to grow boundaries. But I want to talk about, as a segue, a conversation I had shortly after becoming the chair of 1PS with a young man who is a resident of what Councilmember Garner said was in fact, our first neighborhood, Desert Highland. And he took me around to show me the neighborhood, show the pride that he and others had in that neighborhood. And one of the things, as we were finishing that particular morning, and he was talking about the city and some of the negative experiences that people of color had had in Palm Springs, he invited me to go visit the Chuckwalla gates. And I must admit, it took me a few weeks before I got over to see those gates, but it was, whatever the intent, that's not what I expected to see cutting across a public street in the city of Palm Springs. And I'm glad there's been some unintended consequences as we have moved forward. And I'm glad there's been some unintended consequences as we have moved forward. I am really pleased that we are seeing neighborhoods that have struggled at times prospering. But we have to live together. We have to work together, and we have got to be connected with one another. And all the City Council is proposing to do here this evening is to open access for pedestrians and bicyclists to cross on a sidewalk on a public street. I think that's the least we can do.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilmember Wood, do you have comments or questions at this time?
I just want to say a couple of things as a comment. First of all, we received an enormous amount of emails and an enormous amount of people testified tonight. I really appreciate that wholeheartedly, because it shows your commitment to wanting to make Palm Springs the best it can be. No matter what your opinion on it, the fact of the matter is that you participated. We like to be an open and transparent government, and I think we also want to be an open and transparent city, and we represent a lot in this city. I think opening for pedestrians, everything we've read doesn't seem to be the problem. The problem was vehicle traffic in many of the letters that I looked at and many of the correspondence that I read, and also a fear of crime. And I think our police department has shown that that fear may not be a reality, it may be more of a fear than anything. So, you know, with all of that in mind, I really want to thank everyone for participating. I do thank Councilmember Middleton, Councilmember Gardner, Councilmember Coors, really make a good point in why we need to keep an open environment. You know, and this goes, if you even think about somebody who's handicapped, they have to go all the way around several blocks to get to something. It's really not what we want to really promote here. We want to really promote much more inclusivity. With that, I thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I appreciate everyone's comments. I'll try not to repeat any of them, but just quickly, you know, it's our policy in the city of Palm Springs to have open streets and to have a preference against gates, and that's in our general plan, and it's in all of our decision making. And so, you know, there's a lot of comments. I agree with Councilmember Woods. It sounds a lot, some of them are about vehicle access. Really, we're talking about opening city sidewalks that are public property that I wouldn't call them a gate, it's a fence for pedestrians. It's a fence there, the sidewalk has a blockage there. And so that's a problem for people who are, you know, need access, people with strollers, you know, people who need to get through, including public safety personnel. And so it seems like a simple solution here is to open that up, and Mayor Protem said it better than I could, that, you know, that's the least that we can do. I think we would do it in any instance, you know, that aligns with our planning decisions. You know, someone said that this is political and just being done for political reasons, and that's not true, I think, for all the reasons that you heard. But planning and land use decisions are political. Where you can walk in your neighborhood is political. You know, the access that you have to neighborhoods and the way that streets are designed to include or exclude. We heard that there are racial covenants in this area, and like in a lot of places in the city of Palm Springs, and that is one of the reasons why our city looks like the way it does still today. So it is all political in our lives, but we are here just making the best decision for the public and for the city in the future. And I don't think we want to see 30 more years of this fence gate. So I do think opening it up to pedestrian access really is the least that we can do. So is there other questions or comments, or is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion made by Councilmember Garner, seconded by Councilmember Coors, and that would be a motion to approve the modification of the gate, as outlined in the staff report. Can we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Garner.
Yes.
Councilmember Coors.
Yeah.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Middleton.
Aye.
Mayor Holstich.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. How are we doing? Do we need a break, or do you want to go forward with the next item?
We can go forward and then take a break a little later. How's that?
Great, perfect. So the next item is Item 5A, Review of the Fiscal Year 2020-2021 Mid-Year Budget. If we can have a staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. This is the mid-year budget report. As you may recall, we started the year dealing with a COVID issue, and we reduced our revenue, and we adopted what you would call is a rolling budget. And in doing so, what we had anticipated is that we moved through the year, we would find out what our actual revenues and expenses were, and we would, in essence, modify our budget as needed. So ultimately, in the end, we would end the year with our revenues matching our expenditure, so we would not increase our deficit. That being said, what we have to report this evening is we have some good news, although we're still cautious, and we do have a PowerPoint presentation. Assistant City Manager Marcus Fuller will present that, and our Finance Director, Ms. Pauli, is here, and we can answer your questions after the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and council. As Dr. Reddy mentioned, this is the fiscal year 2021 mid-year budget update, which captures revenues and expenditures from July to the end of December. I'm going to give you a snapshot of what we're going to go through, but we're pleased to report that the TOT second quarter revenue exceeded budget by 5.1 million. Sales tax excluding Measure J exceeded budget by 3.3 million in the second quarter, and Measure J exceeded budget by 2.1 million, for a total of 10.5 million in additional revenue over budget, which actually exceeded last fiscal year's second quarter revenue for those three sources by 0.7 million. You might recall at the first quarter review, we reported similarly that from July to September, we had 4.8 million of additional revenue over budget. As a reminder, for that first quarter, we budgeted 80% below the prior fiscal year's first quarter revenue due to the COVID pandemic. We did end up 7% below first quarter fiscal year 1920, and as I mentioned, that was 4.8 million over budget. Second quarter, the trend continues. We're at 5.1 million over budget. As a reminder, we budgeted 60% below second quarter revenue of fiscal year 1920, but we ended up 4.5% above fiscal year 1920's second quarter revenue. And so here's the rolling summary of the TOT, and this is on cash basis. And so as a reminder, this is capturing cash received in the month it's paid, but that reflects hotel stays or vacation rental payments from the month preceding. And so we budgeted for the entire fiscal year 14.2 million, and you can see that we've already exceeded the total annual budget revenue for TOT. And on a rolling basis, month, actual to month budget, we've received 9.8 million total over budget. So as I mentioned, we're 101% of the total annual budget for TOT, and that compares to basically even with last year's mid-year revenue and slightly over the mid-year revenue for TOT in fiscal year 1819. But I do want to mention that this does not capture TOT revenues during the regional order where there was a shutdown and limited travel. I looked at, we looked at the TOT revenue that has been received in this month reflecting December, and that's at about 1.5 million, which is just slightly over what we budgeted and is half of what was received in the prior two fiscal years. So that is reflecting the effects of the regional order, and we'll see those numbers affecting the third quarter budget update later this spring. With sales tax, again, same trend. We have a strong economy in terms of online sales and the large retailers and grocery stores. We're reflecting 3.9 million over budget. We had budgeted 81% below last fiscal year's, this was for first quarter, and 12, we ended up 12% below first quarter revenue. Second quarter, again, the trend continues for sales tax excluding Measure J, 3.3 million over budget. We projected 60% below last year's second quarter, but we ended up slightly above. And here's again the rolling model showing that we budgeted 8.8 million for the year. We are already exceeding that at 10.3, and the total over budget for the first half is at 7.2 million. So we're 117% of annual budgeted revenue for sales tax, and we are basically in line with the prior two fiscal years. And as I mentioned, this doesn't reflect any reduction in online or retail sales here in the city during the regional order. Those don't occur for another two months as the sales tax receipts lag by two months. Measure J, first quarter, this is just to remind you that we also had 3 million over budget for the first quarter. We budgeted 82% below the prior fiscal year and ended up 5% below. For the second quarter, we're at 2.1 over budget. We had budgeted and projected 54% below second quarter last year. We ended up slightly above. And so for the year, we budgeted 6 million. We're at 7.5 million, and first half, we're 5.1 million over budgeted revenue. So we're 126% of total budgeted revenue for Measure J, and we're basically even with the first half budgeted, first half actual revenue for Measure J in the prior two fiscal years. So as a summary, we're 9.81 million over budgeted revenue for TOT, which is basically the entire budgeted revenue for the year. Sales tax, we're 7.2 million over budgeted revenue for the first half, which is 117% of total annual budgeted revenue. And Measure J, we're 5.1 million over, which is 126% of total annual budgeted revenue. And so if we look at the total general fund itself, which includes all revenue, for the first half, we're about 49.6 million, which is where we want to be, 52% of total budgeted revenue. We haven't received some of our property taxes, those come in staggered payments. This compared to 41.6 million for the first half of last fiscal year. And so we're tracking slightly ahead of overall budgeted revenue in the general fund, and we're also tracking below in expenditures. You can see we're at 49.5 million or 44% of total budgeted expenditures, which compares to 54.2 million for the same period in the last fiscal year. Looking at our general fund balance summary, at the next council meeting, we'll be presenting the final audit for the prior fiscal year. That will reflect a starting unrestricted general fund balance of 26.3 million for this fiscal year on July 1st. Current general fund revenue adjusted, including the additional revenue that we're talking about tonight, is just over 112 million. But it's important to note, despite all this additional revenue, our general fund expenditures adjusted are at 116.5, so we still are in a deficit. Now, the good news is that deficit has been reduced from 17, 17 and a half million, now down to 4.3 million, but we are still in a deficit. And so after accounting for that deficit, assuming no additional revenues or increased expenditures for the second half, we project that an unrestricted general fund balance at the end of this fiscal year at just about 22 million. And then with our CalPERS set aside, that sets us at 44.2 million, or you can see a total reserve of 38%. So tonight, we're recommending that you amend the fiscal year budget to increase the revenues specific to TOT sales tax and Measure J for the second quarter, and from that, appropriate only 230,000 for the two positions noted in the staff report related to the occupational health and safety specialist and for an information technology technician in the IT department. So with that, Madam Mayor and council, that completes our presentation, and we're happy to get into the weeds as you see fit.
Thank you, Marcus and everyone, for that thorough staff report and all of the work that went in to this. And we know that doing a rolling budget model is a lot more work, and we truly appreciate the work that went into this. Do we have questions or comments from council members? Mayor Protem Middleton.
Thank you. Marcus, Dr. Reddy, great report and really nice-looking numbers. Question for you, as I understand it, the only action request you're making this evening is that we approve unfreezing two positions. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. So, I don't know if we want to go into comments yet, then I think this is very encouraging news. We still are not out of COVID yet. We do not know what is going to happen over the course of the next year. There are some very encouraging signs here, but I continue to believe that we must be extremely prudent and cautious as we move forward. Earlier in the year, as it looked like revenues were starting to come in better than we were expecting in some quarter, I called for at least 50% of any additional revenue to be set aside in reserves, and that we should build up our reserves until the unassigned reserve was equal to our sales tax and our TOT taxes. And I think that's a conversation that we'll continue to have as we move forward into the budgetary process, but I've not seen anything from this emergency that causes me to believe we should be anything other than extremely cautious when it comes to the reserves that we have. And looking at the numbers as they stand today, in fiscal year 1920, our sales tax were 21.7 million. We now have 21.9 million in unassigned reserve. TOT was $26.4 million in fiscal year 1920. We, to get to the goal that I've identified, we're barely halfway there. And so with that, I think that Dr. Reddy and Mr. Marcus Fuller are appropriate in asking for the two additional positions, but I'm not ready to make any additional expenditure decisions based on the revenues as they are today.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Other council member comments or questions? Councilmember Wood? You're still muted. You muted and then, you unmuted and then muted, and I'm going to get that, your muted hat for you.
I like talking to myself. I really appreciate the comments by Mayor Protem, Lisa Middleton, and I can't agree more. There's a lot of things that we have put on the back burner, like our roadway improvements and things of that nature, that I'm very concerned about in the future that we pick back up. And we're not really clear with this latest shutdown, what's really going to happen. We had our restaurants shut down, we had our hotels shut down, we had our Airbnb shut down, which is a large percentage of our revenue. So I echo Mayor Protem in taking a very cautious view and appreciate the rolling budget. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Garner. I definitely appreciate the sentiment of caution, but I do think that there are some things that we need to move forward on, and Councilmember Woods brought one of those up, which is our streets. I'm very concerned about some of the areas of our city that have, that need more than just a slurry seal. I know that Marcus has those, that list that, that we've been provided that information in the past. I'm not sure. I'm not sure exactly how many streets it is. It's not too many, thank goodness, but those streets do have, some of them have potholes, some of them are consistently being patched, and those are the types of things that we don't want to see in our city. And I really hope that as we are monitoring this and moving forward, that we can approve redoing some of these streets that are in bad need. One area that I just happened to spend a lot of time in is Desert Highlands Gateway Estates, and there's quite a few streets over there that really need it, and I've had to report several times already because they were a danger. So I would like to just put that out there, that I think that should be a priority as we move forward, even if we are moving forward cautiously. In a, in terms of our budget generally, though, I do want to point out, I just want to put some things out there that are still far away, but I want you all to hear them, and I want the public to hear them. And that's doing, again, more things with our parks, like we've discussed many times. One of them is, I don't know if everyone knows this, but our Desert Highlands Park is actually much larger than what's currently developed. It extends quite a bit more. I honestly am bad with measurements, so I'm not sure if it's an acre or more or less, but it's a good amount of land. I know that at the last meeting in the community, there was talk about a BMX park, which I think is a really cool idea, because if you ever go into that neighborhood, you'll see the kids on their bikes all the time. It's one of their favorite pastimes. So I'd love to hear in the future ideas like that, really talking to neighborhoods about different things that we haven't heard before, that we haven't thought of. One of the other things is, we don't, we still don't have actual soccer fields in any of our parks, even though we have a ton of residents who make their own soccer fields on the weekends. So I'd love to see that, especially in the parks that are already used in that way. And then, you know, we did, I know that the year before I got in council, there was an attempt to get a grant to create Whitewater Park, which would be at the end of Sunrise, and that's something that I'd either like to see another grant for, or just our own money to build. And in that area and that community, there's, there would be a great need too for a small building, such as the pavilion. When I was growing up here, the pavilion that's by the library was used all the time for quinceañeras, for weddings, for all sorts of community kind of events, instead of renting out, for instance, the Riviera, which is far more expensive. So I would love to see a community space like that in the northern part of our town, because I think it would really benefit all of us. So those are some of my big dreams that I just wanted to throw out there, because these are things I hear from the community all the time. But again, the priority I see is, yes, funding these two positions, and after that, hopefully fixing some of the streets that are in bad need.
Thank you, Councilmember Corr.
Great, thank you, Madam Mayor. So I want to echo what everyone said. I agree we need to be cautious. I was at the Palm Springs Hospitality Association Board meeting, and I think the numbers that they think we're going to be seeing for December and January during the shutdown, and especially in TOT, but also, you know, for restaurants, some of the local sales tax. Obviously, there's still a lot of online shopping, which brings in a lot of it these days, and want to get that back to our local businesses, of course, is going to be really low, but it's really good to see these numbers, and it was a great staff report. I really appreciate Councilmember Garner's comment on the roads. And I think one of the things I, you know, the benefit of a rolling budget is to see where we're going. And so in the next month or two, as we see, I really would like to get from staff, are there priorities, especially things that are going to cost us more later, or we know we're going to have to do, that doesn't make sense to wait on? And roads is one of them, right? We saw what happened after the recession, when our roads fell so far behind, we cost us eighty-five million dollars total to get them back where they should be, and we don't want that ever to happen again. And so I agree, especially roads that are in, where there are potholes, and people are going to be damaging their cars or potential accidents. If we could see what that would cost, or if we're better off doing a larger road project, we see a lot more Measure J funds, which is a major part of where roads came from. So I'd like to see that, and, you know, sometime this year, hopefully sooner than later, but when we can get together in person with the community and do the kind of strategic planning, and really make sure we're reaching out to everyone throughout the city to participate so we can get those ideas. And parks, I think, for this council is such a high priority. And I hear it in my neighborhood, you know, the closest, you know, park is Ruth Hardy. And for, you know, a lot of folks, especially seniors, they can't possibly walk there. And so how do we, want to improve our existing parks, but where, and sometimes there can be pocket parks or smaller areas, as well as big parks, right? And so really looking at a comprehensive parks plan, even separate from a strategic plan, I think could be a really great thing to do and really engage our residents, because that's one of the benefits of living, you know, in neighborhoods, is having access to those parks. And for me, it was such an important thing growing up. It's where we went almost every day after school. And so I'd love to see that move forward. So thank you for raising that, Councilmember. And thank you, staff. Really, this was a very clear, understandable report with lots of numbers that was easy to follow, so I thank you for that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Appreciate all of your comments. I think overall, this is incredibly great news that we got out of really, hopefully the worst of this pandemic, you know, a lot less impacted than we expected. And I think it is really important to talk about what are the investments that we're going to make now. There are a lot of items, I agree with the comments about investing in our streets and roads, other projects, like capital projects, things that are going to cost us more later on. We're just not in a place where we have to make severe cuts like we did before. And I really appreciate staff. I know we kind of put you through hell a bit there, having so many budget meetings and having such a difficult conversations about what to prioritize. You know, I do think that this next quarter is going to be really difficult. That is what we're hearing from hotels and others, our small businesses, we're severely shut down. But I hope that we will not face such severe shutdowns going forward, and that we will have more revenue than we projected for the rest of the fiscal year. So I think that's all great news, and I would like us to see, not just to talk about capital projects or street improvement projects, but staffing as well. You know, we made a lot of cuts to parks and rec and to library, and those are the services that have been getting our residents through this, you know, very difficult time. It's difficult, there's not a lot to do, they're providing really creative opportunities for enrichment for kids and families and all of us. So I really would like us to make some investments and bring back up that level of service, at least for our priorities, right? We can't bring back all of our staff, we don't know exactly what the next few months will hold, but if we do pick some priorities about what might need to be staffed up more, I think we should do that, maybe at the next time that we review our budget, knowing that we might have a difficult quarter, but still, like, the light is at the end of the tunnel, we've gotten through this. I think our economy is going to be better than ever, like Councilmember Corr said. Palm Springs is hot, people still are coming here, people want to come here after the pandemic. It's a place that's always been known for recovering and all those things. So I'm very, very hopeful for our future. I think that we'll be in a much better position. I think that we really retained our reserves. We still have a huge percentage that is in reserve, and I'd like us to invest some more of the gains that we've received back into the community next time we consider this. So I'd like to make a motion. There's a few items here, so that's to amend the fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget to increase the general fund budgeted revenue and Measure J capital fund budgeted revenue, amend allocated positions and compensation plan for those two funded positions, IT technician and occupational health and safety specialist, amend the budget to appropriate two hundred and thirty thousand dollars from the general fund to do that, and then all of the direction that we've provided to staff during this time.
I'll second.
So I made a motion, seconded by Councilmember Corr. Is there any final discussion or direction before we vote? City Clerk, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Mayor Holstich.
Yes.
Councilmember Corr.
Yes.
Councilmember Garner.
Yes.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Middleton.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. You want to keep going? Let's do one more, and then we'll take a break. If that works. So we have item five B, a discussion regarding the Community Development Block Grant, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two Annual Action Plan and Budget. If we could have a staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, City Council. It's that time again. We are about to begin the process for allocating Community Development Block Grant Funds, or CDBGs. The Department of Housing and Urban Development does require us to prepare an annual action plan. And if you recall, last year, when the council approved the consolidated plan, all the goals included in there are what guide the annual action plan. The anticipated amount is four hundred and fifty thousand dollars this year from HUD, but we do not yet know what the official number will be. So we're basically pegging the starting point at what we received last year. But in addition to that, through the good work of our consultants, we have identified some additional funds from several previous years that amount to one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in additional resources that can be reprogrammed. So we're very glad to have those additional resources that are still eligible for expenditures. So the total amount we're planning on is five hundred and sixty-five, three thousand, three hundred dollars, five six five, three hundred. As you know, and you're probably experts, HUD establishes maximum amounts that can be used for administration and public services. The administrative max is twenty percent, which is one hundred and thirteen thousand dollars of the five hundred and sixty-five, and the public service grants are limited to fifteen percent, which would be about eighty-four thousand dollars. However, from that pool, we are also proposing to fund the Fair Housing Program, which is mandated by HUD. So by receiving federal HUD dollars, we're also required to implement a fair housing program, and that's estimated to be about forty-five thousand, so that really cuts that in half. The remaining amount is for public facilities. And in this case, we're proposing that the remaining balance be allocated for public facilities, since we know there's a strong need in the community, and, you know, we've heard some of the infrastructure reports, and the cost of getting our facilities back into proper shape can be very expensive. So it's believed that these additional funds will go a long way in that regard. Furthermore, these funds would be spent in low-income areas for public facilities that are available to the general public, so I just wanted to point that out. Specifically, those projects are, the two projects being proposed for the public facility dollars are both at Demuth Park, and they are for central air conditioning project at the Demuth Park Community Center. And that involves removing seven large evaporative coolers, and removing a part of the walkway to make room for new mechanical units, adding two rotation air handler systems, adding two heat pumps, and these are, this is very large equipment, and the total project cost runs about four hundred thousand dollars. You may recall that last year, we actually allocated one hundred and thirty thousand dollars of CDBG funds to this project, so if we can allocate the remaining two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, this project would be fully funded. And again, this is at Demuth Park for central air conditioning units. The second public facility project being recommended is for Demuth Park restroom project, restroom improvements. Demuth Park is in need of new restrooms, standalone bathrooms, and includes, the project would include demolition of the existing restroom structure and construction of new bathroom facilities to the east of the existing ones that are also accessible to the adjacent parking lot. The remaining funds in the public facility group of funds is one hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, which we're recommending be allocated to this bathroom project. And again, this is in a census tract serving low and moderate income households. But an alternative project council may be interested in is playground resurfacing. Three of our parks are in need of playground resurfacing, and the cost is about two hundred thousand dollars to resurface the playgrounds in each of those parks. Measure J funds can be used, but again, CDBG funds could also be used for the Demuth Park, parks to be resurfaced, and each park runs about two hundred thousand dollars, so that would necessitate some rejuggling of the funding before we draft the final draft of the annual action plan. And I bring that up because, as we'll discuss, well, we'll discuss now in terms of process, we will have a public hearing scheduled for next month, followed by a thirty-day public review period, and then a second public hearing scheduled for April twenty-second. So ideally, those, you know, would get as much public input as possible in the first public hearing on March eleventh, so that we can make a definitive draft of the annual action plan for review by the public, such that few changes would be needed. Otherwise, we'd have to go through the process again if there are major changes. And with that, staff is requesting direction and feedback from the city council and is available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Jay. We appreciate the report. Are there questions or comments from council members? Councilmember Garner.
Thank you, Jay. Can you tell us what the impact it will be since we'd had a new census last year? How will that change? Do we expect that we'll get more money, or could we possibly get less? Can you just kind of talk a little bit about that?
Well, I'm not sure we've actually received the results from that census, but we have not heard from HUD in terms of our new allocation and if that's more or less, so I would not want to venture out too far on a limb of guessing. And so the answer would be, no, we don't have any definitive information on the changes due to the census.
Okay. I just bring that up because I'm, I know that when we've looked at this map before with the census blocks, we've been kind of surprised at what areas were considered low to moderate income and which areas weren't, just based on our own personal experiences in the city. And so I'm just curious how much that's changed in the last ten years and how much that's going to impact us in terms of where we can do projects, or, you know, how much money we have. So I'll be interested to hear what happens there. In terms of these proposed options, I do think that work within either playground resurfacing or the Demuth Park community upgrades are both great. They're needed, and again, as we just talked about with the budget review, those are the types of things that really need to get done, and we don't want to put off for too long. I think in general, I lean more towards getting those restrooms and AC done prior to the resurfacing, although it's all important.
Thank you. Other council member comment? Thank you. Other council member comment? Or a motion? Sorry, don't we, you need, you don't need a motion, is that right? City clerk, we're just giving direction and then this will be brought forward, um, as an application in a public hearing process. Is that right? Or?
That's, that's correct. We do not need a motion on this item.
So just specific direction about if what's being announced for court, um, is acceptable to be forward with?
Yeah, I'll weigh in. Um, okay. I'll just, I'll agree. I think the staff report lays out, um, good priorities that are needed. Um, I mean, the bathrooms at Demuth are in desperate need. I mean, they're really awful. And to finish the air conditioning is a priority, as are the others. Uh, but I think this is the right direction to start getting public input. So thank you for the report, Jay.
Airperson Middleton.
I agree.
And I agree as well.
Councilmember Woods knows brevity is a leadership skill. Um, you are always so brief. Okay, I just have one question. I agree. I think this is the right direction. Um, I just have a question which I ask every time, and that is about the administrative fees. Um, and I can't quite understand if we already have, um, staff, um, approved and paid for through the general fund and through our budget, um, and we're paying 20% in administration costs each and every time we do this. Can you explain to me, I think I'm just missing something, why we need to allocate 20% of our limited dollars to administration?
I'll do that. Uh, Mayor, the, the reason that we did that in our budgeting process is block grant allows those for administrative. Now, what we have done is, is that is a way to help reduce the cost to the general fund. So the, the individuals that work on the block grant programs, when we budget, we anticipate that X amount, a certain amount will come be funded from block grant. Uh, otherwise, the general fund would have to, in essence, subsidize, uh, the work of that block grant, um, the block grant itself. So we did that as a bu- budget matter, a budget matter to save the general fund dollars. Now, uh, council could decide that you want all of that to go to the programs and subsidize it fully from the general fund. That would be a policy, a decision that council could, uh, could direct during the budget process.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And sometimes we use the administration fees for consultants to administer a program like our rent relief, right? And then also we have a CDBG consultant that we use for our public process. So it's that type of administration, right?
Uh, that's correct. So for example, when you have, like, the fair, fair housing, uh, that's a direct payment to the organization that does that service for us.
Thank you. That's helpful. We get a lot of those questions from, um, the public. Um, since they rightly want to know, want every dollar to go into these types of investments. But that makes sense to me. Um, so I appreciate all the work that's, um, been done on this. Is there any other direction council wants to give before we move on? Uh, staff, is there any other direction you need from us?
Uh, no, thank you.
Thank you for all your work. So we will go ahead and take a break now, which I promise. Um, so we can take a 10-minute break if that works for everyone. Um, so we'll come back here at 8:07, um, or so. So, um, in 10 minutes, eight, eight seventeen. Thank you.
So we are back after our break and we are at item five C, which is consideration of an agreement with Carbon Solutions Group to upgrade and expand the city's electric vehicle infrastructure and authorization to spend up to $110,000 to support installation on level two charging stations. If we can have a staff report, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council members. I wanted to just hit some highlights of the staff report before opening up to questions. And again, this is a proposal to establish an agreement with Carbon Solutions Group to expand our EV infrastructure and to allow us to spend some money on the level two charging stations that are part of that infrastructure. And this does fall into the category of one of those things you think should be a lot easier than it is. So I'm certainly happy to answer any questions you may have as we go through. So just for some context, we issued a RFP for a proposal for expanding our network back in July of 2020. Some of the things we were looking for in that are low or no cost solution. We were open to phasing and open to changing the number and location of charging stations based on input from whoever the provider may be. And we were interested in switching to a fee-based and networked infrastructure with hopefully low rates for users. We received 11 responses in August of 2020, and two of those responses were non-responsive. And then some of the most of those responses actually incurred a cost to the city of between about a million and $2 million based on the number of charges included in the RFP. We did have one respondent that came back with a lower no-cost solution that we were looking for, which was Carbon Solutions Group. So we have been in negotiations with them to establish an agreement to do the expansion. So some of the features of that agreement are that they will cover all the costs of our level three DC fast chargers that would be installed. There are 10 that are proposed across the city. And although we do have a couple of grants that have been awarded to us from the state in the amount of $140,000, those grants may expire, but this proposal is independent of those grants. So they will use them if we have them, but if we don't use them, their proposal still stands. They will charge us $4,500 per level two charging station and assume the operation and maintenance and electricity costs for those stations after they are installed. Based on the number of level two chargers, this comes out to about a little over $100,000, which is why we're asking for the funding to be set aside for that those purchases. Some portion of those will be reimbursed from grants from the state. So we anticipate only spending about $60,000 on those level two chargers through this process and no fees after they're installed. The other thing is that they plan to pay us a leasing fee for the charging spaces. So for each level three space, they would pay us $100 a month, and for each level two space, they would pay us $25 a month for a total of about $18,000 a year in revenue to the city. Now, by comparison, we have a level three charging station on at the visitor center that's an EV Go station. We do not receive any revenues from that station, but they do pay us for electricity costs. Lastly, they will be charging a rate of around 29 cents a kilowatt hour initially. They may change this rate over time based on energy prices and seasons. So they've agreed not to exceed 75 cents a kilowatt hour for those for the user fees. The in terms of whether or not there's really an industry standard for this, there really isn't. We're sort of blazing new ground here in some sense. Again, the only thing at point of comparison I have for it is really our EV Go station where we don't receive any leasing fees, but they do pay for the electricity for that station. So in terms of scope, there are a number of stations across the city that would be included in this, but mostly we wanted to focus on making sure that the entire downtown core was covered with these new stations as well as City Hall and the convention center. So really those places that a lot of visitors tend to go to. So we have, again, some fast chargers in level twos at City Hall, the downtown museum parking garage, the downtown barista garage, and then the barista parking lot behind the vineyard, as well as the convention center are the places we have scoped out so far. We've got sort of a phase one B, which would be the church lot, which is behind Just Fabulous. And we would be eyeing that when the Southern California's charge ready Southern California Edison's Charge Ready Program is ready to go, which helps pay for infrastructure for some of these locations. So that would be kind of the last site in the downtown core that we would think about. And then in the future, we would look at other spaces across the city, things like community centers and other places where we either have chargers or would like to place some new chargers, assuming this all works out. The terms and the termination points. So it's a 10-year agreement with two five-year options to exercise. Their determination for cause, there is no penalty to the city. At the end of the termination, whether it's for cause or if it's for cause, or it's the end of the term, we would have the option of purchasing the equipment that's installed. Any termination, they would leave the infrastructure in place. So they would not be digging up lines and things like that. So all of that electrical infrastructure would would stay in place. If we terminate without cause, for whatever reason, they do charge 150% penalty for based on the cost of the project. So we would owe them 150% of the cost of the project, although they would leave behind all of the infrastructure, including the charging stations. So that is a potential risk to us as we would go forward. That cost of that penalty does decline over the years, $100,000 each year. So again, as we get closer to the end of the term of the agreement, that cost would would really be minimized. And just for your reference, I've included a few pictures here of the potential charging locations. This is City Hall. They would be basically across from our handicapped accessible spaces and kind of in between our building and the dog park. And then we would replace the two chargers that are in place right now that are next to our COGEN facility. At the museum garage, they would the charging stations would be located on the ground level or on the entry level in the northwest corner of the bill of the garage. The level three chargers or the fast chargers would be located all together on one side, and then across from them would be the level two chargers. For the barista downtown garage, we have yet to finalize with SCE the power source for these. So this may change a little bit based on their input. But the current plan is to locate those chargers either along the Indian Canyon side at the ground level or in the back of the garage there at that same level, sort of where our downtown trash enclosure is around the corner from that. So so we, again, we're waiting to finalize some details with SCE on this particular location, but we are excited about having those fast chargers there. Then we the parking lot behind the vineyard, we're just going to expand the number of level two chargers that we have in that location. So they'll be in the same place, just two more of them. And then the convention center is just what they call a rip and replace. So we would just be replacing the existing chargers with new ones in their existing location in the corner of the parking lot there. And that's really all I have for you tonight. So if you have questions, I am happy to answer them.
Thank you so much, Patrick, for the really thorough staff report and the report tonight. Are there any questions or comments by council members? Council member Whit?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Patrick, are there any existing chargers that we have in the city that would not be captured in this program?
Yes. So there are several chargers that we would have remaining that would still be free to the public. And they are at places like the library, across the street here from City Hall, there is a charging station that we would eventually replace. And so those would be part of a future phase. Again, if we if we like this relationship and want to continue it, we would continue on with other locations.
And is there a reason we didn't incorporate those into this first phase?
For a couple of reasons. So one is, we wanted to limit the scope to kind of that downtown core and City Hall, the places where we think are going to be most utilized. Also to test out the relationship again, because this is a fairly new thing, we wanted to make sure that everybody was comfortable moving forward. And so it's a it's a way for us to test out how this works. The other piece of it is that I mentioned before, there's something called the Charge Ready Program that Southern California Edison has. And so once that program kicks in, we may be able to get free infrastructure costs through Southern California Edison to do some of the remaining locations. For example, at Demuth Park, where we want to install new ones, we might be able to get away with very little infrastructure costs there.
And then when I go to the downtown parking structure, there's a bank, a whole bank of says Tesla chargers. Are those only for are those our chargers, Juan? I assume they are. And are those only for Teslas?
Those are not our chargers. Those are Tesla's chargers, and they are for Teslas. Yeah. So even though I'm sorry. So even though there's a lot of charging stations down there, they're pretty much dedicated to Tesla.
And do we get any revenue from that because it's in our garage?
I do not believe that we do. We just have an agreement with them to have the space, and that's it.
So we've given them free space is what we've actually done then?
Yes.
Okay. And then just two last questions here. What is the sustainability account that the money is coming from?
So we have basically sustainability manages two, actually three accounts. One is the recycling fund, the other is the sustainability fund, and the other is the state subvention fund. And so the sustainability fund basically covers costs that are not associated with recycling.
And where does that money come from?
It comes through fees related to trash and recycling. So it all comes.
And then your quality management account, I assume has to be used for it comes from AQMD, and I assume that has to be used for various specific purposes, such as what we're using it for.
Yes. And EV charging stations is one of the things that it can be used for.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Either way, it's fine. Thank you, Dennis. And I just want to add about the Tesla chargers because I'm really proud of the work that we did on those Tesla chargers. So Tesla offered to install for free those chargers in our garage. So Marcus or David, I don't know if you have the numbers in front of you in terms of how much they invested in those chargers in our city.
You know, I don't know what they invested. It was tens or $100,000. There was a lot of infrastructure that they had to install because those are all powered on their own meter. They pay all the electricity costs for those charging stations. So it was a significant investment for Tesla to add those to our parking garage. And as obviously more and more people purchase and use Teslas, we wanted to incentivize people to be able to park and charge in the city's downtown garage.
Thank you. Mayor Perotan Middleton.
Thank you. And I want to congratulate Patrick on outstanding report. The part I'm struggling with is, on one hand, we really want to be a leader in getting charging stations into our city. It's something that is so, so important for us. But we're being asked to do a 10-year agreement with 150% buyout if we terminate the agreement short of the 10 years, as I understand it. And we we don't have a good baseline yet as to what is the appropriate relationship and agreement between a city and the entrepreneurs that are installing these. And I don't want to find us waking up a council succeeding us a half a dozen years from now, feeling like they've been locked into an agreement that's really a bad agreement. And I don't know how to judge, based on the available record, what is the right kind of agreement to go into. I don't know if you can get a question out of that, Patrick, but it's the struggle that I find myself going through, and I suspect you have as well.
Thank you, Councilmember. I have the same question, and it is very hard to judge what the proper relationship is. So one of the things to think about, again, is the only other alternative I have to compare it to is is the EV Go model, which I mentioned before, is leased space without any leasing fee and the right to basically be in that space and to pay back the energy costs associated with it. And and beyond that, I honestly don't have any other point of comparison. I can tell you that the Carbon Solutions Group is incredibly interested and excited about this opportunity, which I think is is an is an interesting position for us to be in because we can help each other drive utilization of these these pieces of equipment, which is really the kind of the deciding factor of whether it works for them and for us, quite honestly. So so I wish I had a better answer for you, but unfortunately, I do not.
If I could, Mayor Perotan, sort of approach this from a little different perspective that might might help address your concern. Our goal was that we would do this without using city dollars for the infrastructure. And if we could accomplish that, then the trade off was obviously there would be a number of years that they could amortize their investment. So we looked at early on, well, what if we just did it ourselves? This was a result of going down the path of not having the initial investment. Now, this does not prevent us from also going into an agreement with another company, say, two or three years from now, for other sites in other areas. So this is our initial sort of path to get these new up-to-date ones where people can actually do it, do it quickly, use their credit cards. But this does not preclude us from doing other deals with other vendors if we see better deals come along. Because you're right, 10 years is a long time. I had a little problem with that. But to say the city's investment, we thought it might be worth doing. But again, it doesn't preclude us from doing other deals with other vendors.
You both make good, strong points. Where I find myself coming back to is wanting to move forward with this contract and with this project. After all, it's only 23 stations. But to spend some time developing over the course of the next 10 to 15 years, how many stations do we project that we are going to need in Palm Springs? And what would be a realistic pathway to to begin to develop up to what we are going to need?
I think that's a great question and a great comment and something for us to think about as we do more strategic planning effort across sustainability. I think that's a great question, especially because right now, we are at, I think, a turning point in the EV market. So, you know, with all these companies that are saying, we're going to go electric in the we're going to go electric in the next 10 years to 15 years, tons of vehicles are going to come onto the market in the next two years even. So, I think we would be in a lot better position to have that kind of a conversation in a year or so, whenever we see what those new models are like, how they're selling, things like that, and how this infrastructure takes off. I also think that, you know, there's been a lot of talk about, at the state level and at the national level, about more incentives, and so, I think that is going to further drive the market, and so, again, we were looking at 23 chargers as part of this. We may say, you know, in two years, we may say those Level 2 chargers are obsolete, and we just really need to focus on Level 3. So I think it's both a number question and a type question. So, I'm right there with you, and again, it gets back to Councilmember Woods' question about, you know, why not do them all? I think it's prudent to do a portion of them, and then think about it, and really understand how it all works, and then move forward.
All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Court.
Yeah. So, Patrick, thank you for the work and the report, and I support moving forward with this. I agree with Mayor Protem that, you know, we really need to think about this as a long-term plan as well. I think the cancellation is really if we cancel without cause, which would be hard to understand why we would, since there's no downside to us, even if the chargers aren't being used that much, I mean, and they're putting all the infrastructure. As I recall, I think the first 12 Tesla chargers, and we phased those, until there was enough usage, and now they're doing another 13, I think the first 12 was about half a million dollars in investment. And as we see in, you know, some other cities, including other cities in the valley, they're trying to get electric chargers, especially in their shopping centers, because people park, charge, and then shop or dine and support local businesses. So, I'm glad we're doing them both in the garages, but also looking at, you know, our community centers and other places where residents go, so they'll have the opportunity to charge in those locations. So, I'm glad to see this moving forward, and hope we will continue to do more of this in a strategic way. Thank you.
So, I would just add to that, one of the opportunities that we may have is, what we could do is utilize some of the chargings, the older charging stations, and put them in places that don't have charging stations now, to get a sense of utilization. So, for example, if we wanted to put a couple in Demuth Park, that Charge Ready Program with SCE would allow us to do that with, basically, free infrastructure costs. We could utilize our old chargers, see how the utilization goes, and then figure out what the right mix might be in that location.
That's a great idea. Thank you.
Councilmember Garner, and then back to Councilmember Wood.
Thank you. Yeah, speaking about different neighborhoods, I was just curious, we had some charging stations in the Desert Highway Park parking lot, and they were unfortunately damaged last year when there was that incident at the center. So I'm curious if there's going to be any putback there, or kind of what the status is there, since we're talking about charging stations?
Yeah, my intent was to actually have that as part of our expansion effort as well, so, again, it would be included in the additional phase that we would be doing in the future, but if those have not been replaced to date, then I'm happy to work on making that happen, so.
Okay, thank you. You know, they have not been replaced yet, but thank you so much.
Patrick, I'm just wondering, I see that we have an operation and maintenance section in our contract, and I'm wondering, who on staff makes sure that they, I don't know how this works, how, that the charging stations are actually working, and then notifies them if they're not working? Because it appears they have five days to fix it, if it's not working?
So, yeah, so under this agreement, all of that work would be handled by a company called ChargePoint, which is the firm that's providing the charging infrastructure. So, they would be responsible for repairs and making sure that they had, I think it's like a 98% uptime with their various chargers, so they would be the ones getting those calls and actually responding to the calls. And that is really one of the things that we were looking for in a relationship, is making sure that that operations and maintenance component was addressed, because it gets overwhelming for, can become overwhelming for our maintenance staff to constantly be keeping up with the maintenance of these units as they are now, so.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. I just have a question, if we have a sense of how much these might generate, in terms of the fees that might be charged, like overall, how much could be generated per location?
So, I do not have a very good sense of that. The typically, one of the things I did was, I tried to take a look at the utilization of our Level 3 charger that's at the visitor center, the EV Go station, and that is the only station in our city that we actually have usage data on, because none of the other ones are monitored, metered, or networked. So, when I looked at the utilization of that, and I looked at the carbon fuel credits that would be generated by the utilization, the use of that, basically, I came out with a break-even calculation for that particular station, and I know that station is, has a fairly low utilization rate. So, I think on the lower end, you're looking at a lot of these stations kind of breaking even, but if you get much higher than that, then I think that's when you start to make some money on the credits and the usage fees, so.
Thank you. And then, in terms of the rate, I know that we set a maximum rate. Is there a sense of phases, or is it completely up to the discretion of the company that they could turn around and go up to that max?
So, it is up to their discretion, however, again, their interest is in driving utilization. So it's in their best interest to keep those rates competitive and to keep them down, and they wanted that room, basically, to accommodate potential increases in energy costs, and so, they actually went through the numbers with me to show me how utilization affects the rates that they pay and the costs that they incur and that kind of thing, and so, anyway, so I believe that they'll be able to maintain that 29 cent a kilowatt hour rate, as long as those stations are fairly, even if they have fairly low utilization at those stations, so.
Thank you, because the 75 cents per kilowatt is a lot higher than the other current fees and rates in the comps that you found, right?
Yes.
Okay. It almost seems like it's such a good deal, I'm trying to, it's such a win-win, I think, for us. I'm trying to find what is the catch, and how does this work? Because I'm just incredibly proud of the work that you've done and that our city has done. I know we've talked about for years the need for these charging stations everywhere. I think we want all the charging stations in all the places. I love your idea of putting the existing ones in other places for residents to use as well, and to learn about the utilization, I think is a great plan. So, overall, I'm just so thankful for all the work that you've done on this. I know the Sustainability Commission has been advocating on this issue, I know we have, and our residents too, so I'm really proud to support that.
Thanks.
And I think everyone's spoken. Are there other questions or comments? Councilmember Wood.
I was just going to make a motion, and I was going to make a motion for staff approval, but I wanted to also say that this is great on the heels of our wind farm that we're doing, that this really is an absolutely excellent combination of the two, so I make a motion for Demuth staff recommendation. I'll second.
Beat us to it. We all wanted to second that one. Thank you, and I think that our leadership on sustainability is so important for our brand and for our residents and for our future here, so we'll keep up this amazing work. We've had a good week here for Sustainability. So there's a motion made by Councilmember Wood, seconded by Councilmember Court, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Woods?
Aye, yes.
Councilmember Court?
Yes.
Councilmember Garner?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Middleton?
Aye.
Mayor Holstich?
Yes.
Motion passes 5 to 0.
Thank you. The next item is Item 5D, consideration of approving the city manager employment agreement and verbal report on compensation. If we can have a staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, tonight you have before you the contract for the new city manager. As you all know, unfortunately, Dr. Reddy has decided to retire, so we have, you have interviewed and selected a new city manager, Justin Clifton, and we wanted to give you a brief report regarding the summary of his compensation that's in the agreement, and then ask for your approval of the agreement. The compensation for the new city manager will be set at $275,000. It is for a two-year term. There is a provision for a discretionary increase at the city manager's annual performance evaluation. There is also a provision in here for enrollment in CalPERS, consistent with the city's current CalPERS compensation formula, sorry. And then, the city will also be contributing $625 per month to a 457 retirement plan or some equivalent plan for Mr. Clifton. And then, the agreement also includes compensation in the amount of $10,000. It's a one-time payment for moving expenses, and that provision includes a repayment provision if he separates within 24 months from the city. There's a prorated formula within the agreement for repayment. That summarizes the compensation terms that are within the agreement.
Thank you. Questions or comments from council members? Mayor Protem Middleton.
I want to thank Mr. Clifton for his cooperation during all of the discussions leading up to coming to an agreement, to Mr. Ballinger for his work on representing the city in these negotiations. We have, as we talked about the last time, we had an extremely competitive process. We think we've hired someone who's going to be a truly outstanding city manager, at a very responsible contract for the city and for Mr. Clifton and his family, and I move approval.
Second.
Thank you. So there's a motion made by Mayor Protem Middleton, seconded by Councilmember Wood. Thank you to each of you for all of your work on our committee, subcommittee, for doing a lot of the legwork here on this issue. Are there other, is there other discussion from council members before we vote? I'll just say, we're incredibly grateful to Dr. Reddy for everything he's done for our city and for staying on longer than he needed to, or that he could have with us after he announces retirement. The effective date of this contract is April 5th, so we're looking forward to Justin starting then, and to echo Mayor Protem's comments, I think Justin is, will be a rock star for our city. You can see his energy and excitement and drive to move our city forward, so very much looking forward to the future. So there's a motion, and a second, if we can have a roll call vote, please.
Mayor Protem Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Woods?
Aye.
Councilmember Garner?
Yes.
Councilmember Court?
Yes.
Mayor Holstich?
Yes.
Motion passes 5 to 0.
Thank you. The next item is Item 5E, consideration of approving the five-year lease agreement with Capital One Public Funding for acquisition of 14 Ford Inceptors and five Ford Explorers for the Police Department. If we can have a staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I would just note that you did approve the purchase of these vehicles previously. In keeping with state law, this is the actual borrowing agreement that we're borrowing money, and we needed a separate vote on this, so that's what's before you this evening, the vote on the actual agreement to borrow the dollars to purchase the vehicles. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments, or a motion from council members?
I'll move the motion, the item.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Motion made by Councilmember Court, seconded by Mayor Protem Middleton. If we can have a vote, please.
Councilmember Court?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Garner?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Aye.
Mayor Holstich?
Yes.
Motion passes 5 to 0.
Thank you. The next item, right on time, at nine o'clock exactly, is public comment on non-agenda items. So this time has been set aside for members of the public to address the city council on items of general interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. Although the city council values your comments pursuant to the Brown Act, we cannot take any action on items not listed on the agenda right now. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker, and the city clerk will begin contacting speakers by telephone. If you could begin, please.
Madam Mayor, I would like to let you and the council know, we do have three public comments tonight. They were submitted by members of the deaf community, and they've requested that the letters be read out loud. So, as an accommodation in this situation, I will be turning on the timer and reading as efficiently as I can, but if I do not conclude the email within the two minutes, I will move on to the next one.
City clerk, I have the ability to extend that time because it's an accommodation, right?
Certainly. If you give me the time extension, I'll go ahead and finish each of these letters.
Okay, thank you. We'll listen to them and see how long they are.
The first letter is from Brandon Barella, to be read at city council. Good evening to the city council members of Palm Springs, standing in solidarity with others in the deaf community. I send this email. Thank you for the recent proclamation wherein you recognize the growing deaf community in Palm Springs. It was great to see. In recent years, the deaf community has met with Rhonda Hart to discuss the lack of access to effective communication at Palm Springs Pride. He was bringing his student, he was bringing in students to interpret, which is not effective and actually illegal. This year, he brought in interpreters but overworked them to the point of being unfair labor, and they volunteered. His friend was given the position of coordinator, and that coordinator did not do an effective job. Ron was informed of this, and he ignored the deaf community. The same has been, the same person also serves as the chair of the Human Rights Commission. For the past 12 months, the meetings for the HRC have been online. Not one of them offered captions. The latest meeting was to present words to various community members, was the last straw. It was not captioned. When captions were asked about, someone lied to the mayor and told her they were not working. Never was it told to her that they were not working, but never presented. When the deaf community complained, the city council apologized and then said that it would not happen again. The fact is, these were meetings held by an organization meant to protect and advocate for the deaf community. They have failed to do this, and the lack of effective communication is just another example of the failure to do the job. The fact is, a chair of the HRC should be aware before this came up. Because of the lack of insight, acts of autism, and discrimination, I ask that Rhonda Hart be removed from appointed office and request the HRC as a whole issue a public apology to the entire deaf community. Also, I ask you, I ask that you encourage all places of public accommodation in Palm Springs to abide by the law and provide effective communication, whether they are providing musical shows online or in person. Pushing us aside will no longer work for us. We will not just let this slide. Please look at the event called Deaf President Now, if you think we are going to let this one go. Brandon Barella, resident of Palm Springs. The second letter is from Patrick Veal, to be read at city council meeting. Good evening to the city council members of Palm Springs. Thank you for the recent proclamation wherein you recognize the deaf community in Palm Springs. It was great to see. In recent years, the deaf community has met with Rhonda Hart to discuss the lack of access to effective communication at Palm Springs Pride. He was bringing in students to interpret, which is not effective and actually illegal. This year, he brought in interpreters but overworked them to the point of being unfair labor, and they volunteered. His friend was given the position of coordinator, and that coordinator did not do an effective job. Ron was informed of this, and he ignored the deaf community. was informed of this and he ignored the deaf community. The same person serves as the chair of the Human Rights Commission. For the past 12 months, the meetings of the HRC have been online and not one of them offered captions. The latest meeting to present awards to various community members was the last straw. It was not captioned. When captions were asked about, someone lied to the mayor and told her they were not working. Never was it told to her that they were not working but never presented. When the deaf community complained, they apologized and said that it would not happen again. The fact is that these were meetings held by an organization meant to protect and advocate for the deaf community. They have failed to do this and the lack of effective communication is just another example of the failure to do the job. The fact is, the chair of HRC should be aware before this came up. Because of the lack of insight, acts of autism, and discrimination, I ask that Rhonda Hart be removed from appointed office and request the HRC as a whole issue a public apology to the entire deaf community. Also, I ask that you encourage all places of public accommodation in Palm Springs to abide by the law and provide effective communication, whether they are providing musical shows online or in person. Pushing us aside will no longer work for us. We will not let this slide. Please look at the event called Deaf President Now if you think we are going to let this one go. Patrick Veale, resident of Palm Springs. And the last one is from Butch Vixler. This was sent previously. Please read it out loud. Please read it to the city council at the meeting. As an accommodation, I am deaf. Greetings. A few months ago, this council presented a proclamation to recognize the deaf community of Palm Springs. We were honored. This past week, the Human Rights Commission held a meeting and gave awards to local community members for their advocacy and work. Three councilmembers were there, including the honorable mayor. The HRC was formed to protect against human right violations in Palm Springs and to advocate for minority populations who may be impacted by illegal and immoral acts of discrimination. The same HRC chaired by human, or I'm sorry, the same HRC chaired by Rhonda Hart failed to provide access to this meeting for the deaf community. That's right. The group meant to protect our rights violated our rights. The meeting was held via Zoom and no captions and no interpreter was provided. We did not ask for an interpreter because Zoom has a caption option, which we figured the city would utilize for all public meetings, especially a meeting of the Human Rights Commission. Rhonda Hart is known for his acts of autism as chair of Palm Springs Pride. He refuses to pay qualified interpreter for live performances there. So we did not see this as a mistake, which can be fixed by saying we will do better next time. The ADA is 31 years old, which is about the same age as HRC. They should know better. Rhonda Hart does know better. You spat on the proclamation you issued a few months ago and now you need to make it right. The removal of Rhonda Hart and his replacement being someone who will advocate for the deaf community is appropriate action. Sincerely, Butch Vixler, resident of Palm Springs Smoke Tree Area. And that concludes public comments.
Thank you. There's no additional callers?
That's correct. There are no other callers for today's.
Thank you. The next item is city council and city manager requests for upcoming agenda development. Are there requests from councilmembers? Councilmember Coors?
Thank you. I don't know if it's here at the, but I don't see it, but I brought up at a couple meetings that we need to move forward a campaign finance ordinance because of state law. And we want to do that sooner rather than later. So it's in effect, well ahead of people. If we can get that on maybe sometime in March, that would be ideal. Thank you.
Thank you. Other requests?
Just to let you know, Mayor Protem lost power in her computer, but she's, she's here.
She's in the room with you?
Yes, that's why the mask went on.
Do you want us to pause and take a break so she can rejoin?
Why don't we do that? And then we just make sure that she's doing okay. Thanks.
That'd be good. So we'll take a five-minute break in hopes that Mayor Protem can rejoin.
And Mayor, I'm going to run down and see if I can be.
Readjourn. After our short break, we have all of our councilmembers present. So we were doing council requests for upcoming agenda items. So which councilmember were we on? Councilmember Garner?
I just have a question that maybe information can be provided to us at a later date in terms of accessibility on Zoom. If, if Erin or someone else can give us kind of information on how we turn those on, if we're on Zoom meetings or things like that, or even with, when we have, we've had Zooms with Spanish interpreters, kind of how all of that works? Because I think the understanding how the technology functions is really important to making sure that we're being accessible. So if that can, that can be just something that's emailed to us, I would really appreciate it.
Thank you. That's such a good point. Because we, you know, and please have grace with us, the city staff, as we learn how to move all of our activities to Zoom. I know we host a lot of Zoom meetings. We want everything to be as accessible as possible. So I think that's a great suggestion. Councilmember Garner. I saw Councilmember Wood.
No, I was waving to somebody leaving. Sorry.
I'm going to take that as a I want to talk. Yeah, Mayor Protem Middleton?
Thank you. And again, I want to express our apology to the deaf community and ask, and thank staff for the work that they have done. As we move forward with both ASL interpretation, closed captioning, and our Spanish interpretations, it's so important that we get those right. If we could have some type of check as we're going into each meeting to make sure that those systems are in fact working and accessible, I think we would all appreciate it. We do, we try so hard. And when we find we've made a mistake, it, it's just something we don't want to do.
Thank you. And if, if I can, I think I'm able to say, because it's not an agenda item, but please know that the responsibility of responding to requests for accommodations lays on city staff as well as the ability to administer any meetings. And so it is not on chairs or appointed commission members. That's beyond their scope of duty and what we don't pay them to do. So please know that the city council takes accessibility seriously. If you do have a request for an accommodation, please do submit that to the city ahead of time if you're able so that we can go ahead and plan for that. And then we will do our best in the moment to accommodate everyone who needs it. But please know that responsibility lies on us. And that's why Mayor Protem Middleton apologized. Other requests before we adjourn? Councilmember Coors?
Yeah. Not that I dislike light agendas, but if we have bandwidth on the 25th, given the plastic styrofoam ordinance is ready to go, you know, we sort of held back because of COVID. And, you know, we can look at the timing of implementation. It doesn't have to be immediate. But the sooner we do it with enough notice, it gives businesses time to plan, even if it's for after COVID. So given it's a light agenda, and we've discussed it at length before, it might be a good opportunity to bring that forward.
Thank you.
Just some clarification on that, Mayor.
Go ahead, Dr. Reddy.
Just to, just to clarify, so you want the styrofoam to come on the 25th? So that agenda is due next Thursday. And I'm not sure what the expectations would be for notifying businesses. And then obviously then with the rental discussion, the homeless rental discussion, the affordable housing, and the conformity report on the Tocotz and Hermosa project and the tourism marketing study, I might suggest changing one of them to the meeting in March if you want to go forward with the plastic styrofoam ordinance. So just a little direction on the preference.
Well, I mean, why not, in order to make sure we have enough time to give notice, why don't you put the plastic styrofoam on the first meeting of March? What does others think? And Mayor Holstich, you're the lead on that. So what are your thoughts?
I think that works. I mean, Dr. Reddy, you would tell us what needs to come forward on the 25th versus which can come in March.
So if the first meeting in March would work, Councilman Coors, that would give us obviously more time to do the outreach. Because on 25th, we do have the rental housing assistance discussion, and then the other, the other conformity report and the tourism market update. So that first meeting in March actually would work probably better from a staff standpoint, if that's timely enough.
That'd be great. Thank you. I have a request too for the hero pay, hazard pay ordinance for essential workers. This came from members of UFCW, United Food and Commercial Workers, to request a hero pay for 120 days or so for being at risk at work. Coachella passed an ordinance last night that also included farm workers and other food workers. So I have been working on an ordinance with Jeff Ballinger, our city attorney, and I'd like it to come forward at the next council meeting if we have the bandwidth and time to do that. It would be an adoption of the ordinance that Coachella passed. They've requested that we pass a similar ordinance so that maybe we could get ordinances like this passed Valleywide. So if that can come on an upcoming agenda, please. Any other requests? Dr. Reddy, do you need other direction from us in terms of agenda development since we have time?
No, I think I have plenty of direction. Thank you.
Plenty of items to do. Okay, thank you all. So we will go ahead and adjourn. The next regular city council meeting will be held on February 25th, 2021, at 5:30 PM. Thank you all. Have a great evening.
All right.
Good night.